December the 18th, time for another City of Prescott Council meeting. Tonight, got a pretty good agenda. Let's start off. We'll stand, have a word of prayer from Brother Curry. We'll follow that with the pledge of allegiance.
Eternal God, this afternoon we come to thank you so much for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for allowing us to gather here to take care of the business of the city. We thank you for this year, all the good things that happened, for that we're thankful. Even the bad thing, we're thankful that you went through it with us. So now, God, we pray that you will bless those in the community, that they might have food, the children may have toys, and all of us may receive just a little bit of love. Doesn't matter what went on this year, it's time to give out a little love. And for that spirit, we want to say thank you, Alan. So Lord, bless us in the name of Jesus, bless our community, bless our nation, and Lord, bless our children. This season brings about a lot of stress. And I'll call on you to speak to the family that's in need and say, peace be still. Help is on the way. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Thank God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, you should have a copy of the minutes from the November meeting. Should be a copy in your packet. We want to get approval of those.
Okay. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
By?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
All right, you should have a copy of the November 2023 financials. You need to get approval of those.
So move.
I'm sorry, seconded? Excuse me, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
By?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, Ms. Jamie Hillery from the Chamber of Commerce. Step forward to the rust chair. The hot seat.
Y'all be nice. All right, so we have finished off as of Saturday our year at the Chamber with all of our activities and events, and we don't have another activity until next year. But we've had a great year. We've just completed our Breakfast with Santa event, the Christmas parade, we had a lot of community coffees just recently. And then we also had our Giving Tree program. I haven't been here to talk with you all about that, but this year, our Giving Tree project, we were able to adopt 69 children in our community. We opened that up. We said, you know, we'd take 20 families. We took well over and beyond that. But our community was really who got behind it and supported that program. So it's designed like an angel tree, but ours is along the lines of necessities of clothes, like underwear and things like that, socks, shoes, coats, things like that that the kiddos need for Christmas. And so the families that adopt these kids, they're asked to provide one of each of those necessity items. And these children, a lot of them, I mean, you wouldn't believe the amount of gifts that came in and out of our office to these families. So thank you all. If any of you were one of the ones who adopted these kiddos, but we were able to do that for our community, I was very excited about it. I gave you all a monthly service report of everything that we've done since the last city council meeting. And then on that back page there, I went ahead and included a calendar of our annual events and activities that we do for the community so that, you know, just for the upcoming year, you can see what we have coming up each month. That doesn't include, of course, the community coffees and ribbon cuttings and things like that, but I'll, of course, keep you up to date. And then our Chamber website has a calendar of events that we list all those on as well. Any questions? Merry Christmas.
Got it there, Chief? The 2023 Nevada County Officer of Duty.
Yeah.
Jordan.
Let's see, last Friday, we had one of our officers graduate, Alita. So he was certified. I also hired a new female. Her name is Kason Reed, no, Kason Lyndley Reed. She will attend law enforcement academy in January. Let's see, what else? Oh, I grew the Santa. We had it on Saturday, and it was great. We made a lot of babies happy, a lot of parents happy. You had to be there to see the glow in their eyes, the smiles on their faces. It was something, something special, you know? I'm ready for the next, I'm ready for Christmas already. But to help people in our community that do need it, a lot of them wasn't expecting to get assistance, but we were able, through our community, people helping us, donations, private donations. I mean, they were coming, let them write. I raised more money this year than I did last year. And was able to take care of... My daughter just texted me. She said it was 40 kids that we took care of. And the parents were, they were super emotional. It was a pride, baby. It was happy, but it was happy tears. It was tears. But I just, I just want to thank our community for standing behind me. I mean, because without the community, I couldn't do things, you know? And you guys were supporting me. It means a lot. And Mayor Oliver, for my 2023 award. I wasn't expecting that. And I told him I was just, I was a pride, because I told him I didn't deserve it. I didn't deserve that, you know? But he said otherwise. And I thank him for that. I thank him. I thank my guys and my ladies for standing behind me. Because without them, can't do a thing. So I appreciate them. When I go somewhere, they come. They come. And I love that. I love that. And Tyler, this is Sergeant Higginson. These are my babies now. I don't know. I want big things for these, these many of you.
All right, thank you, Ann. All right, going down the agenda. So we got good news. We've been trying for a while. When you've got old water and sewer infrastructure, you need money. And the Natural Resource Division, Department of Agriculture, have approved a loan to Prescott for up to $3,047,705.75. That's from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. And the good thing about it, there's a principal forgiveness amount of right at $350,000. Forgiveness amounts $349,649.25. So tonight, we have Mr. Kyron Browning from AL Frank's Engineering and Mr. Perry Nelson, who if you read Hope Prescott, been with the city 48 years. And he was recognized today at the city Christmas party. So we're gonna let them two take the high seat and discuss with y'all a little water and sewer money.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Kyron. I'm from AL Frank's Engineering. Me and Mr. Perry have been working on this project for quite some time. Basically, this, the project that is funded is, is to replace the water intake structure that is on the river. We've been battling, I say we, area of the city guys have been battling problems with the existing intake structure for several years. A lot of that problem is due to the age of that structure as well as the changing flow line of the river. The river has shifted, the main channel of the river has shifted away from the existing intake structure. And it's sanding in with sandbar over where the structure takes that water. We've extended the pipe further out into the channel, and we're still having sand problems. So if the council approves this, the new design will be in the same area, just downriver a little ways, but it will be a completely different design to help to be able to overcome some of the battles that you have with sand and some other problems that were not there when that was originally designed. So like Mayor said, it's just a little under $3 billion, about $1,000 total. That's with the loan and the principal forgiveness portion. And just a few other high notes. It would be a 20-year note, 4% interest. They estimate that there could be a water increase up to 143%, but that is based on their, that's based on ANRC assuming that you don't have any ability to pay any additional note right now. That, the final revenue increase will be determined at loan closing. And it will require that the city do a, have an independent rate study done to determine what your rates need to be to take on that additional loan.
Other than that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
The reason this is being brought up this evening is we need to have the mayor sign, acknowledging the receipt of this loan before the end of the year. So the process of securing the loan and all the details that we worked out, you have to formally accept that you own this money. Now, it's not obligating yourself 100% until you get through the process. But that's the start of it. So that's, that's why we're proposing all this thing is to get approval to start the process. We've got, Kyron's got to do the design work, and the state has to approve it. It's a long process, but this is, this is the beginning of it. So we'll get approval for the mayor to sign and say everything's started.
I have a question. We've met this situation.
For about five or six years, just now. The scope has gotten worse.
Are you going to be able to solve this problem?
We believe we will be able to if we move the entire structure downriver. I think a couple hundred yards, there's a deeper area of water where the sand is not, we're not having to battle as much sand. But we're also looking at putting in some different types of pumps that are not affected by the sand as much, so. I believe we'll be able to solve it, at least for a, you know, a period of 20, 30, 40 years maybe. But again, that was the issue. The original design was a good design at the time it was installed. But the, the channel has shifted away from it and caused some issues that probably were not on the radar at the time.
The original install was 1964, and it does mine until 2014. And after 2014, it shivers and been mining since then. We have approached the Congressman, Westerman, about getting the Corps of Engineers to help by dredging out some of the sand. We don't know that that's possible, but we want, you know, to approach it to the directions and try to do the best we can with all the help we can.
So we can possibly be in the same spot years on down the line?
It's possible.
The other part of this, I know it needs to be done. We need to do it. But here's the other part. How are we gonna pay for it? Carl, how we look, how can we pay for this thing? We talking about a 20-year thing, and you gotta pay for it. Even though you approve it, you gotta figure out how you can pay for it.
And see, we. If we have a bond, we issue, we determine how much the bond pays us.
There's a man that's already working. He's already pulled out a lot of our debt to concentrate on the rate, on the, to see what kind of study. We would have to increase the water rates to cover a loan payment to not tax any of the other utilities, strictly on the water to do this.
That's what I'm saying. We need to careful. It needs to be done. But my thing is, I know I won't be here when you're ready to pay it off. Somebody's gonna say, well, who approved this thing for a 20-year thing for us to have to pay all of this? But my thing is, if we can pay for, you talking about increasing the rates on the water or whatever?
We won't allow this one to increase this recommendation until the rate study is done. And it is, rate study is in the process.
So if we approve it and we find out the rates are gonna be pretty high, do we still have to go through it?
The city, the city would have the option to back out of it up until the point you sign the loan closing documents. Now, you may incur some fees because there're gonna be design work and bond work going on at the time or during that process. But in the event you wanted to back out, if you could back out prior to the loan closing documents being signed, you could back out. And you would just be, you just have to pay for what any work has been done.
So this is just to, to secure y'all to continue to do the research on?
This is, this is to secure the money that ANRC has set aside, set aside in the City of Prescott. This is to allocate that to the city. And so they don't put it in another property.
We have, we've been having discussions about how we're gonna get money to do this.
Right.
The other thing to look at, your system is pretty well maxed out to the point where you can add, if a big business come in here that demanded a lot of water, you couldn't supply them, all right? Like another potless.
It's, that's a tricky question to answer. We have a 2 million gallon a day water treatment plant. We can operate it up to 2 million gallons a day. If a plant comes in and wants more than that, you'll have to increase the plant from there on. I mean, we're, that's our size, and that's all we can do. Hopefully, if another business comes in that needs more water, then we would have incentive to increase it. And we can help them with that. But this is securing our source. Our treatment process is working fine, but the source is the problem right now.
In the event your, your river intake structure completely fails, if that were too heavy, you'd have how many days in your holding pond?
About a month.
Have about a month's worth of, worth of water in your holding pond. At that point, the intake structure, without it, your plant in town doesn't produce anything. So that's, that's kind of why this one is, was a priority on our list for the last couple of years working through it.
So I actually, I actually like to, unless somebody have something to say, I actually would like to propose we get started with it so we can, the funds will be there. And if some reason we have to change, we have to change. But I think if I'm, if I'm right, Brother Perry, this is the project that you didn't know where you were gonna get the money to get it to where we can supply.
This is it. We've, we've had emergency funding and everything else.
But this is the same issue we done had before. We done, we done set her, we visit the same thing before. This not our, you know, first time, isn't it?
Before, we were doing quick fixes to keep it going. We're trying to do a solution for permanent fix is what we're trying.
I'd like to make a motion. We move forward to work toward getting a permanent fix for the ongoing problem we've been having with sand in the water and a lot of other problems.
Do you guarantee this?
I guarantee that it's going to be your fix forever? It will be a mechanical plant, so it will be, it would be prone to having mechanical issues. The only other factor is the shifting of the river. Again, we cannot control what, what the river does. And the only prob, the main problem with where your plant, where the intake structure is right now is that the river has begun to deposit sand right into where the intake pulls out of there.
Before it down.
And that is cause didn't fail multiple times over the last four or five years, or to have issues. And so the best, the best solution that we've been able to come up with, like I said, we've been looking at this for, you know, three or four years. And the best solution, me and Mr. Perry and my boss, Andy Frank, has looked at it as well. We've had other contractors and other people from around the state look at it. The best solution that we found is to, is to build a new intake structure downriver in a deeper hole that we found. We've actually put a boat in the river, measured the depths, and done a lot of studying on this. We feel like if we shift it down there and do a different pump design that can handle, that the sand won't tear up those pumps like it is the ones you have now, that we can have a long-term solution. Again, if the river continues to change flow channel, we can, we cannot, we cannot do anything to help that, but.
I did, I second that motion. I had to do that before it died. I'm seconding that motion. And you told me what I need to do, that we could back out if we see we couldn't. So I second it, so we can keep the funds going.
Okay, we have a motion in a second if there's no further discussion. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks?
No, right now.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Okay, margin passes seven one.
All righty. Thank you, Kyron. Good shit, you did.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a great group.
All right, next on the agenda, Mr. Carl Dowenford, Dowenford County. He gonna preach to us tonight.
You have in front of you first, I think, the amendment to the 23 budget. We're reducing the profit on the budget by $254,000. We still have a profit of over $200,000. But due to some expenses and all that we hadn't budgeted to start with, or that we didn't budget enough to start with, better to say that. And we have an excess expenditure of $254,000. Now, I'd be glad to answer any questions on that, if you have any. We need to pass this before the first of the year. This needs to be done.
See anybody got any questions on the amendment?
I move that we do the amendment to the budget 2023.
Second. Okay, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
By?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Well, you have a tentative budget proposal for 2024, but this is tentative. We ain't through with it yet. I am still trying to figure out how we're gonna report to y'all about the, not, about the, not, about the Quetco payment. That doesn't everything do. The interest is built into this. So we have, we're projecting a def, uh, not a deficit. We are projecting a surplus of $255,591 now. I'm not gonna tell you that's what it's gonna be after we get through with it, because it may be different. I am going to make some changes for you with you. And I'll point them out to you when we bring the budget in. But I'm moving some things. In your financial statement now, it shows the amount we pay in parks, for instance, one thing. And another place it shows the insurance for the park, and another place it shows the utility of the park. I'm, I am going to combine all those three so you're, oh, you're, you don't have to look over here and say this, that, and that. Now, parks is not, is one that I'm pointing out, but that's not the only one. There, there are several on the, now, we are also, I guess I need to point out that we, we have, we have deleted paying for the Nevada County Rescue Unit's utilities. And we've deleted paying for the depot so they can pay for themselves. The city, no reason for the city to be paying for that. The city's already contributing to the depot, and there's not a reason to do that. So that's doing that. We did, we did raise the parks budget, their operating budget, to $110,000. That was raised up about $4,000.
Fairground?
Huh?
Fairground.
Oh, fairgrounds, we're taking away paying the utility on the fair, on the fairground. Fairgrounds Association, they say. So we, we may, the committee's doing some good work. They're changing it. And this, we, we just struggling with it. That's what we're doing. But right now, it looks like we'd have a, if we left like it was, we'd have a pro, a problem. Surplus of $255,591. But I think that's not gonna be there. It's not gonna be the same when we get through with it. But I do think that it's best that, that the city not pay for things like that. Anybody have any questions on this so far? I know it's a lot of paperwork. My goodness, I know about it.
Good job. Good job.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, God. Okay, next on the agenda, we want to get a committee from the city council to go along with some of our department heads and start the interview process. We have seven applications, seven resumes for city attorney. So in January 2024, we want to start interviewing city attorney candidates. So we would like to get three councilmen to go with our other four to have a seven-person interview committee since this is a very important job in the structure of the city. So don't all shout at once. Who would like to be on the committee? Okay, Iris, Sotira, I need one more. The hard part's gonna be planning around all the attorneys and our committees, but we'll get it done. Right.
Tell them the four is.
Tell them the four is.
Four people we got with them are Perry, Bruce, Larry, Mary. Because all four of them used the city attorney prerogative in their actions with the city.
We need one more.
I'll, I'll help.
All right, appreciate it. And we will be getting back to y'all in. Alright, appreciate it, and we'll be getting back to y'all in January. We're gonna have Perry, Bruce, Larry, Mary, Ivory, Satara, Mr. Austin. Okay, Ms. Linda was here last month about some barking dogs here real loud, especially at night. So we went looking through our ordinances, and here's what we got, council. The ordinance number two of two thousand and two, that is on the animal control regulations and dogs. Section four, disturbing the peace is what it's titled. It shall be unlawful for the owner of any animal or any person who harbors or keeps an animal to permit such animal to disturb the peace and quiet of the neighborhood by allowing such animal to bark excessively or constantly. That's what they're doing, isn't it, Ms. Linda? Or to make other loud or unusual noises any time of the day or night. Such activities shall be declared to be a nuisance. And the owner or party who permits such activity shall upon conviction be guilty of a misdemeanor and at this time in two thousand and two, punishable by a fine of not less than five dollars, no more than twenty-five dollars for each separate offense plus court costs. So it would be hard to get a judge to waste his time on them smaller fines right now. So if the council agrees with section four, well, you might discuss it, and we're, we're, I talked to Ann, and we're asking for a larger fine on that. Right now, a minimum of five and a max of twenty-five dollars for each separate offense plus the court costs.
So we need to amend that.
If y'all would like to change it to a different number, we could put some numbers in there and come back with the ordinance again next month and vote on it.
Well, it's, it's more of a matter, as I looked into it, a person that had dogs like that, is supposed to have fifty thousand dollars insurance, in case the dog hurt somebody. That was in the ordinance that I got from Chris. And on, on the, the animal control or the police can ask for the proof of insurance. We'll be looking at it on there, thank, we need to think about all the, that's what the ordinance said.
You're talking about the big vicious dog?
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, hers, hers are little, hers was little shawalas that the neighbor had. Yeah, I know which one he's talking about.
Are you talking for like pit dogs or pit bulls for the insurance? I have two dead dogs, they're pit bulls, and I'll be damned if I'm gonna buy fifty thousand dollars worth of insurance for pit dogs. You can take that ordinance and cram it so far up your tailpipes that you choke it.
The ordinance is what the ordinance is, and that was, that was in reference to pit bulls.
Go ahead, Todd.
I know some of the animal control officers that hope, and they have ordinance that you have to have rabies, vaccinations, and tags, and you have to show proof of that for any domesticated animal living down.
Well, I have that.
Yeah, yeah. And if not, you can be fined for it, and they also have a running at large ordinance or something. We, we, we have, yeah. And they have a, I'd have to ask, I'm not sure, but they have a number of, like, you can almost have so many domesticated animals such as dogs, cats, and stuff within the city limits.
Yeah, that's one thing I was looking for, but I didn't see where we have a maximum number.
I don't, I don't think we do have a maximum number, I think, I would say the ordinance, we have these vicious dogs and running at large.
Well, can we, I'm sorry. Now, are we amending that, can we put a number in there for this? So we're looking at a fine of more than twenty-five, five dollars or something like that, is that correct?
No more than twenty-five, so we're wanting to go up on that.
Yes, and then give them a number of how many they can have.
If you want to do that.
I mean, we need to do that.
Who is the health inspector at the health office?
We have a health inspector, this county senatorian?
Yes, senatorian, who is that?
We used to have a health inspector.
Senatorian, has that changed so often? But he has an office at the local health department down here.
Well, what I was referring to is we had a health inspector, maybe they could tell us how many dogs per family or however, you know, she said it's more than twenty, and that's too many for one household. And it's not healthy.
But didn't he have another place somewhere else, and he just had some of them in town with him?
Ann, does, does the barking dog owner that Ms. Linda's concerned with, does he have enough place in the country or anywhere with more dogs?
Not that, where, he moved from here to county, from our county.
I don't do dogs, so I don't know what the right number would be for that.
What's the top number now? What's the top number?
She said twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars.
Minimum is five, Jesus is twenty-five.
We just talked, we just talked about barking, when I have complaints over, I have to say, so people scared to walk down the street causing pit bulls. We'll address that after we take care of the barking. They were, but they're not, they're vicious dogs, oh, it's aggressive dogs. It's aggressive dogs.
So he pays a fine? Does that one, and four dollars? Does he have to get rid of the dogs, or what?
I would say if you set a number on the amount of dogs that you can have.
And see if they can give you this, similar ordinances and fines, what kind of damage. That way they can kind of have some of the base off of.
Yes, sir, sounds good.
They have an active animal control department over there.
We'll have, we'll have Ann and the police keep monitoring your situation, driving by at night when your window's down, keeping an eye on it. And then we'll get that from Tyler, and we'll bring it up again next month and talk some more about it. And Ann and them are on it right now, they're coming by there regularly, so we'll see what happens.
I just-
Maybe you can get some sleep.
I just with the barking dog, but I have had several complaints about pit bulls breaking the chain and chasing people, even individuals got hurt trying to get away from it. And that's not, I've had several complaints about it. That's why I read the ordinance. And you know the thing about the police, right?
Hey, vicious dogs lately, some dog bites?
I bet so.
You called me, was it Friday?
Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, yeah, we ended up giving that pit bull back to the owner, told him that, you know, it's called back out again. Called out the patrol, decided, it was just roaming, and it broke the chain, everything.
And we have some vicious dogs?
We have some vicious dogs. The point is, I have several citizens that has complained about the dog.
But what, 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 what do we have, what penalty do we have on that? I thought we had something. I'm sure it has a penalty, but I don't have it right.
I'm doing what I'm supposed to do, bringing it to the council, letting the council understand that we have, and I'm probably not the only councilman that has heard that, but we have a problem with, actually, it's a pit bull, a couple of them.
We need part of what we have on the book. Did you bring the copy of it with you, did you bring it tonight?
It's set out, I got it, yeah, I have a copy of it.
Let's, let's look into that, and whatever we have on, on the book that was drawn up, we need to follow through on it. We were no pit bulls, and then that was changed.
That was changed to vicious dogs.
But I thought we had a fine on that, too. Yeah, I think it may be a hundred dollars, just guessing, but I think it was a hundred, but I don't have it in front of me.
I'd have a guy that's pretty, pretty much blind going down the street, scared to walk the street. I don't have anything against dogs, but people who have dogs need to follow the ordinance. And keep their dogs.
And we need to put it on her, I said.
The ordinance is what it is, I, I just, I read it because I had so many complaints about, about the dog, so.
Alright. I thank you, Ms. Linda, for coming, and we'll, we'll talk more about it next month. Alright, does any of the council have anything else?
No, I just kind of like to echo what Jamie and the chief said. And thank everybody for all they did for, we went out and just tore it away, and it was, we had to have that in my great gym. It was a lot of people there, a lot of children happy, and we got a lot of support and donations. That's what I like about Prescott, when time to step up and help people that need, that's what Prescott does. So we were, we were actually raising more funds this year than any other time I've done it, I've been doing it for five years. We have a lot of happy children. So we're thankful to the community, the business community, church community, individuals. We thankful for, I just happened to see what a caller, he, he's supported us ever since we've been gone. And we make sure, try and do a lot of good work for the community, so we just say thanks to everyone for supporting all three events, they happen the same day.
That's a good day.
Mayor, we need, I didn't tell them, but the budget committee, the first part of January is going to be with each department head.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Prescott.
Yes.
They have twenty-two audits in their package now.
Okay.
So, so if there's any questions, they want the auditor to explain them, Carl can explain it all. But Black Rogers finally got to us today, he said that we need him for next month, we need him just to let him know.
I was reading his letter that he usually gives us one or two things that we're not doing good, but this year's nothing on there, so we're doing good.
Very clean audit.
Alright, anybody got anything else? I hope everyone has Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Mr. Austin.
That was the same thing I was gonna say, I hope everybody has Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and stay safe.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.